Hello everyone, welcome to UMD Media. UMD Media works on understanding, measuring and doing. We are live on Facebook and YouTube right now. Please share, subscribe, like so that many viewers can access our show today and the shows in the past and in the future. Today we'll be speaking on the upcoming, which is actually tomorrow, UN Human Rights Council Special Session on Ethiopia: Expectations and Fears. My guest today is Adi Salem Desta. Adi Salem, welcome to UMD Media Show.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Great, so for those who haven't followed you before, I would like to make this introduction. So today we're talking about UN Human Rights Council Special Session on Ethiopia: Expectations and Fears. So who is Adi Salem? You can follow him on social media, I will be showing that shortly. But he has served at the Ministry of Foreign Affairs Ethiopia as legal expert and researcher, and then moved to African Union, United Nations Economic Commission for Africa, again representing the Federal Democratic Republic of Ethiopia. I think your final assignment was at the United Nations as economic, trade, law expert and elections officer. And if you haven't followed Adi Salem before, this is his LinkedIn. You can see the link at the bottom and follow Adi Salem Desta. This is his Facebook, @AdisalemDesta, as you can see at the link at the bottom. And finally, he is also active on Twitter, @AdisalemDesta. With that introduction, tomorrow is the Special Session by the UN Human Rights Council. And can you tell us what is going to happen tomorrow? I know there is a resolution to be issued and we also learned, UMD Media has learned as well, there are efforts from the government of Ethiopia through Human Rights Commission of the government to treasure and other countries also actively supporting the government in terms of either watering down the resolution or even preventing the session from happening. Adi Salem.
Thank you, Dr. Getacho, thank you for having me. And as most of us have followed, the Human Rights Council is going to convene its special session, its 33rd special session on the grave human rights situation in Ethiopia. Usually, the Human Rights Council convenes special sessions on matters that are matters of urgency and on topics that cannot wait until the upcoming ordinary session of the Council, which is scheduled for the beginning of March. And it was in this understanding that the European Union and other countries which are allies to the European Union has called for the Council to convene its special session so that those grave human rights violations, in Ethiopia particularly Integri, will be addressed as a matter of urgency, given the grave human rights violations, including genocide and other atrocity crimes. And what is going to happen is the meeting is decided to be convened in the working manner of the Human Rights Council for a meeting to be convened. The only requirement is one-third of the members of the Council should propose the convening of a meeting. In this case, as you are aware, there are 47 members of the Human Rights Council and one-third would mean 60 members of the Human Rights Council should propose for the convening of a meeting. And that has been fulfilled and the European Union, 17 members, have already requested the convening of the meeting in addition to, for political reasons apart from the procedural. Other 37, 36 countries have, which are not members of the Human Rights Council, but they are observer states, have requested for the convening of the meeting. And the meeting is going to be convened irrespective of objections because the requirements were met. And surprisingly, this might also show the inefficiency and the incapability of the Ethiopian government, where they have been broadcasting, where they were objecting for the convening of the meeting and they were also rallying other fellow African countries to object to convening of the meeting, which is utter incompetence with the numbers being met. It was the requirements were 60 countries, but 17 countries have requested the meeting. And despite any objections, there was no way that the meeting would be canceled unless the countries that has proposed withdraw their request. In this case, they didn't. And on substantive matters, the Council is going to consider the draft resolution that the European Union has tabled. And they have communicated, they are drafting. On the draft that we already have, there are a total of 37 articles, 23 preamble articles, paragraphs and 14 operative paragraphs. And some of the languages from their drafting, it gives you the impression that the European Union has tried to, they are best to accommodate the Ethiopian government. And of course, you'd expect internal negotiation with the member states of the European Union and those countries that have proposed the convening of the meeting. And the resolution, with all its important value addition, it has some worrying elements, but all in all, the resolution would be considered tomorrow. And realistically optimistic that the resolution will pass and it would add value in prevention and promoting the ongoing grave violation of human rights, particularly in Ethiopia.
Thank you very much for that. Yes, like we showed, we have seen on this screen, these are dominantly countries from the European Union, but also supported by others, including Canada, the United States and others. One thing that, in terms of the resolution or the draft resolution, one key element or some people were expecting is the establishment of Commission of Inquiry. Where are we in terms of that? Because we know there was a UN and Ethiopian Human Rights Commission Joint Investigation and that released on the 3rd of November its report. As expected, and there was a conversation on UMD Media as well, that there was a significant lack in terms of independence, impartiality, all that because of the heavy-handedness of the UN, I mean the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission role in that joint report. And we gathered as well, the same commission is calling for not including that establishment of Commission of Inquiry. Do we know anything on that, Adi Salem?
Of course, our consistent requests has been, from the beginning to give some brief background, we have been objecting the involvement of the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission. The request has been an investigation, an independent and impartial investigation, which is a UN-led investigation. That has been our place from day one. And for different reasons, the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission was involved. And consistent with our objections, we, most of us that had reasonable grounds to suspect that the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission would not be a constructive player in the investigation. We were proven right and the outcome of the joint investigation was full of procedural and substantive flows. And as a continuation, we are of the view that there should be an independent UN-led investigation by the establishment of a Commission of Inquiry. As you have rightly said, though the Commission of Inquiry is not included in the draft resolution, it is mentioned with a different name. If you look at the resolution, there is a reference for the establishment of International Committee of Human Rights Experts in the draft resolution. What matters is not the name, it is the mandate that the Human Rights Council provides for this international human rights expertise on Ethiopia. They are more or less, they are provided what the Human Rights Council mandates the Commission of Inquiry to investigate. Briefly to your question, the mandate is given for the international human rights experts on Ethiopia, but with a different name than the Commission of Inquiry. But the mandates are more or less similar to what normally Commissions of Inquiry does and have done in different countries that were mandated to investigate, including Eritrea and other countries that have been under the same mandate.
Great, talking about, you know, when you say we demanded and we expected, I'm gathering you are talking about an entity, the Global Society of Tigray Scholars and other stakeholders, right? Related to Tigray.
Yeah, definitely, by way, I mean, most of the Tigrayans living in the diaspora and also Tigrayans that have still voice, living in Ethiopia, which is diminished voice, but more or less there is the global scholars more or less in the diaspora. And there are other, I am not formally representing, I was not given the mandate, but I can speak for myself. And most of the opinions have been consistent, the requests have been consistent.
Yeah, when we invited you to UMD Media, we counted on your expertise and not representing an entity. But it's worth mentioning, Global Society of Tigray Scholars has been calling actually for this establishment of United Nations Commission of Inquiry. Not only that, it was opposing. It's a big organization and covering all continents, including Europe, Africa, but also North America, Europe, in every continent. And it opposed the establishment of the joint investigation for the reasons you mentioned. I just want to play this from September 13th, 2021. This is Daniel Bakala, the Commissioner, speaking. He is speaking at the UN Human Rights Council. He was accompanied by Gideon, the Attorney General. And this is how Daniel warns or mentions what the international community should do or shouldn't.
Despite the misinformation campaign and social media frenzy, I do hope Council members should also be cognizant that the human rights story of all these conflicts, including Integri, is not merely a black and white narrative. It has nuanced complexities. If Ethiopia's international partners trying to address the human rights crisis are to have a meaningful and constructive role, they should always work with full understanding of history and context of this complex political crisis. Let me conclude by saying that the Council members and the international community should be really cognizant that it is still people of Ethiopia who have the highest stake in putting an end to the suffering of fellow Ethiopians. It's a principle that defines national sovereignty, but it is also a human standard to live up to. It also requires humility to understand that the available national, legal and institutional parameters are far from being perfect, but they remain, in every sense, the most relevant and the most cost-effective tools for addressing the human rights crisis as well as finding a sustainable solution out of this war. So I think it's very important that we demonstrate humility to an acknowledgement and recognition of national processes and parameters for a sustainable solution for the political and human rights crisis we are facing as a people and a country. Thank you, Madam President.
The reason I'm playing this is because Daniel Bakala wrote a letter to the Council for tomorrow's session as well, where among other things, he mentions about the unnecessary of establishing another inquiry, Commission of Inquiry, and he is pushing for continuing the joint investigation. And he also mentions about the establishment of, I think it's in the draft resolution as well, the interministerial task force that the government established recently. So can you speak to the subject of how is it possible for the international community to accept a government entity justifying the way we saw that or in terms of trivializing, normalizing the crimes committed on the innocent people? Again, asking for a continuation of the same commission? And how some countries are supporting or behind this call?
It is unfortunate to, of course, so many, so many unfortunate developments has been the norm for the last one year. I know Dr. Bakala from his previous post when I was in the permanent mission of the African Union. And I have been following the African Commission on Human and People's Rights for quite some time. And he used to address by accusing the Ethiopian government at that time. He was with a non-governmental organization and a human rights advocate at that time, whether that was out of professional responsibility or out of other political experiences, that is a point to consider another time. But from an opposition to, without a hint to transform oneself to a genocide regime apologist, that is quite a transformation. And on the request, the very reason the international community opted to intervene with adoption of a resolution in July, during the 47th session of the Human Rights Council, has been Ethiopia, the government of Ethiopia was not able to protect and promote the human rights, particularly Integri. And he is using the same failure that the government of Ethiopia has failed as justification to continue failing the people of Tigray. And he is leaving the primary responsibility of protecting and promoting human rights up to each country, which is the principle, of course. But the very reason the international community is intervening is because Ethiopia was not able to protect and promote. Not only that, but it was the main transgressor and abuser of those rights. And primarily what he's asking is, he's requesting the Council to give him a pass and to implement the joint investigation, which the Ethiopian government using Daniel Bakala's Ethiopian Human Rights Commission as a cover to further its quest for impunity. And rightly so, the institution that you have said, the task force which was established by the Ethiopian government, more or less which is basically to implement the finding of the joint investigation, which basically exonerates the regime from accountability and on further investigations that are covered in the report to be undertaken by the Ethiopian government, which is more or less asking the same regime that has committed those atrocity crimes to account itself, which is a cruel joke.
Yeah, one thing that also comes to mind is how in the Commission, UMD Media did an investigation in terms of how it was working in the joint investigation. So there were cases where the Ethiopian side was dominating everything, from where to go, what to select, and even if there were any wording in the final report that would implicate the Ethiopian government, it was purposely and intentionally watered down. And this task force, like you mentioned, there is a fear specifically from the victim's side, where at the beginning of the investigation, they expressed that they cannot speak to the Ethiopian human rights investigators. And the UN said, you know, they should be allowed to talk only to the UN part. But the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission threatened, saying that, you know, they will leave out the investigation or drop the whole investigation. So it's because of that reason that they continue to work together. So this is a confirmed, you know, information that we have through UMD Media's contacts in Ethiopia. So given that experience and given that the Ethiopian government is just whitewashing everything that happened there, and we know Aksum was not covered in that investigation, and now the presentation looks like that that investigation was taken as, you know, as perfect as it could go. The reason I'm mentioning it, this is from the UN, let me share this. This is from the UN Office of Special Representative of the Secretary-General on Sexual Violence in Conflict. So they say, I know that the Ethiopian government or the government of Ethiopia has accepted the joint report of the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission and the Office of the United Nations Higher Commission for Human Rights and has announced some follow-up measures to implement its recommendations. Then it's talking about the very task force that you speak to. So the question is, what are the fears? I hear from Tigray side, there was an expression from the government of Tigray and from GEST, as we mentioned, people like you and so on. So if you were to speak to the fears from the session that's coming tomorrow, what would that be?
As you have rightly said, and which the statement that was communicated by the Global Tigray Scholars, GEST, which, most of the inputs that I am alluding to, they are not new. We have been discussing those elements. The expectation is for tomorrow meeting, the Council will convene its meeting and the resolution will be adopted. And on how the reactions are going to be, it is going to be, of course, the Ethiopian government has communicated its objection even before the Council has convened its meeting, without even looking into the resolution because the government knows, in their assessment, they thought that with the finalization of the joint investigation, things would be all smooth, they will evade the responsibility and accountability with the joint investigation. And actually, they have been preparing to go beyond the joint investigation and undertake their own regime-led investigation on the alleged human rights violations that has happened after the end of the joint investigation, which is August 31st, 2021, which basically covers those areas in Afar and Amhara. And in their assessment, what they are saying is, Tigray, it is done and dusted. Any accountability coming from Tigray will be evaded and they will use the investigation from Amhara and Afar to shift the blame on the government of Tigray, which is their basic calculation. And the convening of this meeting, it is going to definitely disrupt their strategies in evading accountability. And what this investigation is going to bring is, it will try to, at least our expectation, my expectation is, it will try to redress the irregularities of the joint investigation by going into areas that were not covered in the joint investigation. Mind you, as you have rightly said, there has been more than 260 atrocity areas that were identified by the government of Tigray and other independent international institutions. And from those, in the joint investigation, only nine areas were covered. Mind you, from 260 atrocity sites, only nine were covered by the joint investigation. Even in those areas, the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission, which is the regime-affiliated institution, have a heavy hand in both the findings and in allowing access and in analyzing the outcomes of those areas. Including, without setting foot in Aksum, the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission included elements on what happened in Aksum. And as you might recall, in the joint briefing that we are given, both in Addis and in Geneva, especially in Addis, the representative of the Office of the Higher Commission for Human Rights alluded, they have counted, they have depended on the finding of the Ethiopian Human Rights Commission. And more or less, we have the macro picture that the joint investigation was the making of the Ethiopian regime. As an extension, they don't have any objection to accept an investigation that they have done themselves and which is basically addressing their own political experience. And our expectation is with the investigation, at least with tomorrow's meeting, the resolution would be adopted. And there is, of course, some shattered diplomacy. As you might have observed, the President of the Republic is in Cordybar, Abidjan. And the primary objective of the visit is to solicit support so that African countries would object on the resolution and so that the resolution will not be adopted. But from the voting regardless and our expectations, the resolution will be adopted. And later, I hope that will be an opportunity to redress the flows of the joint investigation. And beyond the joint investigation, there has been continued human rights abuses and violations after August 31st, which is the end of the scope of the joint investigation. And we are observing daily airstrikes and drone attacks. And as recent as in the morning, there has been a drone attack in Al-Lamata, which regrettably, 28 civilians have died and more than 70 are injured. And there is a continued human rights abuse, which is shocking to man's conscience that has been ongoing in western Tigray. that has been ongoing in Western Tigray and which the Ethiopian, which the Human Rights Watch and Amnesty International has published their report today. And myself, at least from my father's side, being from Humara, I know those areas and it pains me a lot to, of course, all of us Astigrens have been passing through this. Even we are not in a position to grieve our sorrows and our pains the way it was supposed to be done, but let us hope the joint investigation and the meeting, the special session that is going to be convened tomorrow would at least make the accountability mechanism as effective as possible so that the victims and the families of the victims would feel finally justice has served.
Yeah, that's what everyone is hoping for, irrespective of where, who the victims are and who the culprits are, you know, the perpetrators are. There is a need for justice, you know, for redressing the victims' agony, suffering and crime committed against them. This is compiled by Youssef Gavrewhat. Actually, there are two hundred seventy-six locations in Tigray that were covering only between November fourth and June twenty-eighth, the recapture of Magala by the TDF. So like you mentioned, the joint investigation by, worked by Amnesty and the Human Rights Watch that was released today, is talking about new, new wave of atrocities in Western Tigray, which continues to be blocked from any communication as any part of Tigray and all kinds of blockades in terms of communication, transport, humanitarian, financial, economic blockade happening. So like you mentioned, there are countries that would work as spoilers in the tomorrow session, like Iran, Russia, China maybe, and other countries as well. So what do you say to those who are watching this show today? And between now and tomorrow, what should be done, you know, by those who really advocate for human rights protection and justice to prevail in Tigray in Ethiopia in general?
Just to start with your positive note, I would, we have been thanking them in every opportunity that we got for those mandated international human rights institutions and those individual experts with with a strong character that have opted despite all the orders to cover the ongoing war on Tigray and the associated human rights violations and atrocity crimes that have been committed in Tigray. I would like to reiterate our appreciation for the excellent work that they are doing, despite the inaction of those intergovernmental entities that were expected to act differently. And as you have said, from practice, there are going to be countries that are going through the same human rights violation records, which for the sake of saving themselves, they would have similar positions countries, including Venezuela, Iran, China and other countries would rally themselves behind the Ethiopian genocidal regime in its cost to address impunity. It is regrettable that the world is acting along those lines, but at the end of the day, it is an intergovernmental lead process, which is the main defect of the international relations. But my call is primarily for my fellow African delegations that are in Geneva. Of course, they receive their instructions from their respective capital. But it is worrying to see some Ethiopian government propaganda being used along the lines where those efforts by the international community to ensure accountability are twisted as if it has been a fight against Africa. And there has been attempts to Africanize the genocidal war that has been waged on Tigray. And they have been rallying member states of the Human Rights Council, fellow African countries. And unless, we have been saying repeatedly on this area, unless committing genocide is the new African value, there is no way and there is no need to stand by and ensure impunity of a government that is relentless in wiping out a member of its own federation, which is and my expectation and my wish is those countries at least to vote in favor of the resolution. And if they are not in a position to vote in favor, at least to abstain from voting, but as much as possible. If they opt to vote against the resolution, it would be a failure, they have failed Rwanda, and it would be a failure. And they have also failed in other fellow African countries. But this would be a grand failure on their own end. My expectation is the resolution will pass. And as you might recall, in the last resolution that was adopted on Ethiopia, which was during, in July, during the forty-seventh session of the Human Rights Council. And in that resolution, it was passed with twenty voting in favor, thirteen in abstention and fourteen countries voted against, which is a working matter of the Human Rights Council. Because the voting arrangement is, it is simply majority of those countries present in voting. In this case, forty-seven of them will be present in the meeting. And those countries that have voted in favor in that session, they have additional reasons to vote in favor because the human rights situation has further deteriorated from what it has been back in July. And my expectation and my wish is those that have abstained will change their position and will vote in favor of the resolution because the grave human rights violations are only deteriorating for the worse. And it would be incumbent upon those countries to change their position and give the matter the weight it deserves.
Great, that's a great point. I was showing this earlier. Tigray is under multiple blockades. And the implication of this to the children, women, the elderly, the sick, you know, all that is beyond words can express. But also in terms of the narrative. So as everyone knows, the Ethiopian government, Abiy Ahmed's government, was on a propaganda spree on how the war started, as if everything started on November fourth. This investigative report from New York Times yesterday unraveled actually a very detailed account, talking to current and former officials of Ethiopia, including a secretary official who is still active in Ethiopia, mentioning how Abiy was preparing for this genocidal war with his eyes for four months, at least four months before November fourth. So with the blockade, everything, what's happening tomorrow, as well, there is a chance that countries, for their own interest or because of the propaganda, they might do the wrong decision. But the apple is here in terms of, you know, looking at the human rights abuses against innocent people for what they are. After all, this is a Human Rights Council. So it shouldn't be about saving faces, it shouldn't be about Abiy Ahmed or any government for that matter. Any final word before we sign off for today, Ad Salam?
Yeah, definitely. It is just on the narrative of the war, as you have rightly said. The war from its inception has been a genocidal war. It is an attempt to settle political differences with their force. And the intention has been clear, it is an attempt to impose one's own value of reversing the diversity that has the federal democratic order that have attempted at least to to address the formation defects of the state. And the ongoing war is just an attempt to to bring the country back to its unceremonies past. And as the New York Times and other recent publications are proving, most of us are right, we have been saying the war didn't start on November four-four, it has been well-prepared, a result of three years' preparation. And it is good news that the truth is finally getting out. But still, the narration that the war is not integral should also be addressed because some are assuming that the war is outside Tigray, in Afar or in Haar. No, it is not. When there is a daily bombardment, airstrikes and drone attacks, we cannot say the war is not integral. Those places are being attacked within the territory of Tigray. Where, of course, we have to also change our perception of what war means. We have been consistently saying starvation is being used as a weapon of war. As long as humanitarian access is being denied and starvation is being used as a weapon of war, still, we should have the clarity of thinking that the war is being fought in Tigray. Of course, with a different weapon, this time it is starvation as a weapon. And in Western Tigray and in places where other minorities, including Europe and Kunama, are affected, they are in the brink of extinction. And in Western Tigray itself, which is one third of Tigray, our fellow Tigrans are are passing through unimaginable atrocities. And having those elements, the war is being fought in Tigray. Of course, its scope might have expanded to other places, but primarily the war is fought in Tigray. We should not only focus on on the physical presence of other activities, we should always have the clarity of thinking that with weaponized starvation, with weaponized rape and with targeted, even those arrests and mass detentions in Addis Ababa and other parts of the country, it is an attempt to use those civilians as a bargaining power so that the government of Tigray will consider it as activities in breaking the humanitarian siege. And having those cumulative understandings, we should have the clarity of thinking in ways that the war is being fought in Tigray. It might not be physically, but the method of warfare is evolving from time to time. And I want to to bring those elements into everyone's attention. And finally, I want to thank you, Dr. Kitaachow and other fellow fellow Tagaros and friends of Tigray for the excellent work that they are doing.
Thank you so much, Ad Salam Dasta, and I hope we will have another opportunity to discuss the role of the African Union Africans in this in the past one year and so on. But for your time today, I thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
You have been following UMD Media's show live on YouTube and Facebook on the UN Human Rights Council Special Session on Ethiopia to be held tomorrow. Expectations and fears. I was talking with Ad Salam Dasta. And tomorrow, we will build on the New York Times' new investigative report with H Panel. H Panel's weekly Friday show would be at nine PM Eastern Time tomorrow. So tune in for live H Panel with our panelists, Faisal Robla, Youssef Gavrewhat and Professor Estel Gabisa. Bye for now. Share, subscribe, like so that many can view and share UMD Media Show. Your host was Deitah Chazapa. Have a good day.